Ready? Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Real call.
Cody Compton for District One.
Brian Munn.
Miles Davidson.
Notice that the meeting was properly posted on June 5th. District Three will lead us in our prayer and pledge.
Yes, I'll lead us in prayer real quick. And please be with us, Lord, today as we make a difficult decision. And please be with all those that are out protecting us, especially the Sheriff's Department, at the things that they're going through at their headquarters right now. In your name we pray, amen.
Okay, at the DA's request, he's needing to go forward. So do you prefer to do executive session, or you just want to do the item? Your call.
I just wanted to do item number three, get it up and out of the way, right?
Commissioners, if I could.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I think one of the items on the agenda is the contract for Team. As you all know, I volunteered to help the Board figure out what we were going to do on pre-trial services. Since this controversy started, obviously, as you know, Court Services has been decimated. Employees have left. And so this contract has been a work in progress, meeting with the existing members of Court Services, or the remaining members of Court Services and Team, to try to get a contract together. I think all of you have had copies of the contract. If you don't, let me know. I have extra copies, I can give it to you. But obviously, as I've said before, before this Board, it is incredibly important to decisions that we have to make as prosecutors about who gets bond, how much bond, and who doesn't get bond, and why, for us to have NCIC reports and the services of that law enforcement function of Court Services before we can make those educated decisions about who gets released, or what their bond should be set at. And so it was incredibly important to me that that core group of, who provided that law enforcement function, stay in effect. I think the last time I was before the Board, there was a question as to whether or not Court Services group could be moved to maybe the Detention Center as employees, or maybe the Sheriff's Department. I have since learned we cannot make that move, because OLET certifications require Court Services, because they're approved as a Court Services group, to stay as Court Services. If at some point in time, we decide to move them to another organization, it will require an additional total recertification that could take 60 to 90 days. That's 60 to 90 days without the DA's office having access to NCIC reports on people that are booked into the jail, and that cannot happen. We have to get the reports. I mean, right now, Court Services is doing an excellent job, and we're getting their reports on NCIC reports, and people's failure to appear, on other conditions. I mean, I already had it by the time I came over here today. So they're working incredibly hard, and getting us the information we need before we get to court. Having said that, this contract with Team just deals with the supervision piece, because Court Services will stay an entity doing exactly what they're doing now. Team, as we discussed before, and because of the kind of implosion of the supervision piece of Court Services, and those employees leaving, it was critically important for me to get a contract together with Team as soon as possible, so that we could continue the supervision piece. So this contract envisions that Team will provide supervision for people that are out on conditions of release. We will make decisions, the courts will make decisions, on the front end, based upon best practices, that is, getting NCIC reports, and seeing the person's criminal history. And then, once that happens, Team will take up the supervision piece. As I said, even this contract requires Team to adhere to best practices. I would, at some point in time, like the Commissioners, I think Team has already been trained in best practices, I think their staff has gone to training. Court Services never has. Judge Stoner was really, really pounding the table for quite some time about Court Services staff being, being trained in best practices. I would encourage, that's not part of this contract, obviously, but I would encourage this Board at some point in time, to send Court Service personnel to training, so that they understand best practices. That's totally aside. But I did want you all to understand, in this contract, Team is required to adhere to best practices, when it comes to supervision of people that are out on conditions of release. And as I said, I think they've already been trained on that. Paragraph three deals with the supervision piece. That starts on page one, all the conditions. This is, many of these conditions or requirements came from my review and talking to Court Services and Team about what the supervision piece needs to require, and those are identified, as I said, in paragraph three. Paragraph two deals with the case management piece, providing needs to those individuals that need housing, or mental health, or whatever. So there's also a provision in this contract, under paragraph two, that Team will provide case management. GPS monitoring for some of the individuals that get out on conditions of release, that's identified in paragraph four, the conditions there. I should tell the Board that, that Court Services will do some GPS monitoring for individuals that are higher risk, people that are on GPS monitoring because they have failed to appear, or they're sanctioned for some reason in one of the diversion courts, they'll be monitored probably by Team. But, so, so both parts of our pre-trial release program will have some GPS monitoring. The other big part of this contract, in paragraph six, is that Team will take over community service and shine. And I assume that they've already interviewed those employees, I don't know what decisions have been made yet, but they will assume that responsibility, and monitoring, and reporting to the court, if somebody has or has not completed their community service. Commissioner, or Chairman, I don't know if, if I need to go over the employees that are that core group of Court Services, and maybe that's something that we discuss in the long term. You should know that this contract is only to the end of the fiscal year. We'll probably do the same contract beginning the next fiscal year, and maybe it will be more important for me to identify those employees than it is here, but I can give you those if you need. I would suggest that all Court Services, remaining Court Services personnel, get cross-trained. I mean, I don't know if decisions have been made about who's going to supervise that group or not, but I'd like for them to be cross-trained. Right now, it appears that many of the employees in Court Services were signed on. You know, you did the interviews, you pulled NCIC, you did GPS. I just don't think that's, that's something that we should be doing in a unit that is a critical need for the courts, and for the DA's office. I think everybody should be cross-trained. And that's all I have on that contract.
I think we were waiting to see what you had to say, and have a better idea now, and so I think we could, our next step after going forward with this contract today, it seems to me, is to get those employees identified, and then identify a supervisor, and know where we're shaped up from there. Any questions?
Just real quick, Article three, do we have a dollar amount that we're looking at? It's blank, it says now, so.
And Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that Team, we're starting to transition already. As I said, this is a critical piece of what we do in, in law enforcement, and, and on pre-trial release. And so I think they're working right now for no compensation. That's why it was kind of weird that I left it blank, as we're beginning this transition. And then, that's what I said, the next contract will have the.
You'll recall, I asked him to come forward if he would just be kind to help us through the end of the year, and then he has a figure prepared for July 1st, when we enter into that contract. And what we've talked about is, and I verified with the Clerk's Office, that it would work, similar to, you'll recall how we did the Shine contract with Oklahoma City, they keep the money, then we bill against it, so whatever dollar is unused is retained in the city funds, and similar, we can do that here. And in discussions, it's just making sure, of course, that they would not exceed the amount that you've already led for appropriations, and the theory being, they probably won't need that much even. But because the budget's already been approved for this next year, and then that'll allow a year to go through and see how to right-size the budget, when you do estimate needs for the following budget. But the Clerk didn't see any problem in the invoicing every month.
Perfect.
Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Excuse.
No, I just noticed that there was a.
Yeah, a big hole, we're going to write it in later.
Yeah, that's what it's for.
Well, we certainly appreciate you being willing to help us through the transition here in the next 20. I know it's only 20 days, but it's 20 days of your time and resources that just help us get this figured out. Mr. Steele, you're here, do you have anything else you want to add, before we do anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have really anything else to add. Ms. Behenna did a fantastic job of explaining why we need this contract. The short of it is this, without this contract in place for this current year, fiscal year, we do not have access to the information of who needs to be supervised. And so what we're hoping is that the Commissioners will see fit to approve this contract, so that we can take our collaboration with the existing employees to the next level, and just see exactly who has already been placed on, say, ankle monitoring or supervision, so that we can connect with those individuals, and not lose them, or not have any unintended outcomes in the next 20 days or so.
Any questions? Okay, I appreciate Ms. and Ms. Biffle for handling the transition recommendation. Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your time this morning. Is there a motion to approve, number one, our claims?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No consent docket this morning, but we do have people who have signed up to speak on the item, so we'll start off with Mayor Eason.
Oh, Commissioners. This commission was voted into power and voted into office to represent the citizens of Oklahoma County. Every meeting I've been to since September, citizens of Oklahoma County have asked and requested the jail to stay downtown. Yet, some of you seem, single-mindedly, working to move the jail to Grand Boulevard. Even though it gets voted down, it comes back. It doesn't seem like we're getting a good representation of the citizens of Oklahoma County. We have got outstanding support from Midwest City, well, from all of the towns in eastern Oklahoma County, have supported us in fighting the location of the jail on Grand Boulevard. But you're not listening to the constituents. You seem to listen to your contributors, more than you do your constituents. Now, we have heard all along how unprofitable it is to rebuild or restore the jail downtown. Now we find there's already a TIF program being worked on to renovate the jail, the existing jail position. It looks to me like somebody's trying to make money by moving the jail out of downtown, and renovating that area. And I say, if that's the case, then you're putting money interest and developers ahead of the citizens' concerns. You're selling off their security and their rights for profit downtown. Go back and look at that jail. I find it hard to believe that you can, more economically, build a new jail than you can renovate that jail. This is a 31-year-old building, and you can't renovate it to satisfy the current conditions. I find that hard to believe. I think there's more profit in moving the jail, and I think you're looking at profit, rather than the concerns of the citizens. Dale City has stood against this location from day one, and it's falling on deaf ears. We are not getting the representation that we feel like we deserve as citizens of Oklahoma County. Thank you.
Councilman Tatum.
Good morning, Commissioners, how are you? We all need to keep in mind, just like myself, each of you were elected to serve the will of the people, okay? The will of the people was stated last month at the Oklahoma City Council meeting. 750,000 people, that's three-quarters of a million people, through their elected representatives on the Oklahoma City Council, said no. They turned you down for rezoning at 1901 East Grant. Please listen to those people. Mr. Munn, you have said before that people come up here and complain, but they don't offer solutions. I'm prepared to offer a solution today. There's a site at Midwest Boulevard in Willshire that was previously on your agenda, but it was turned down, I think because a pipeline, an oil pipeline ran through that area, okay? I've been informed that the owners of that land now are willing to subdivide that and sell 60 acres to Oklahoma County. Now, if you've been at that area, all that's out there are cows. There's no homes, there's no parks, there's no churches, there's no school, there's no children, it's just a bunch of cows and farmland out there. I would really like you to look at that land once again, and see if that might be a viable solution to this problem. I was going to ask Commissioner Blumer today to ask, to table the motion to approve 1901 Grant. I don't know if you can do that, or either of you can do that today, to table that, at least until you can look at this land, and talk to those owners, and see if this might be a possibility, instead of 1901 East Grant. There's so many people opposed to this location, I would like to this, to see this considered, at least. Okay? Now, today on the agenda, you have 71 acres up for grabs at 1901 East Grant. Your plan is to build a mental health facility. I don't know how many acres that will take, let's say five, let's say six. What do you plan on doing with the other 65 acres? Are you going to build a park? Are you going to build a playground? What are you going to do? We all know, we all know what it's going to be. We all know, there's, there's no skirting around this issue. I mean, it's plain as day. But let's just, let's just back off for just a moment. Let's, let's take our time. I mean, you have until December 31st to allocate these funds on ARPA. This is only June the 10th. I know, I know, and I, and I understand your position, you want to move on this. It should have been moved on a long time ago. I know you want to finish this up, and get it moved, but please take into account, this jail is going to be there for a long time. Dale City's going to be right on its edge. That's going to affect us for many, many years, not just my generation, these generations, but our children and their children. Please, please, find it in your heart to at least table this motion today, and let's look at the land at Midwest Boulevard in Willshire, if nothing else. Thank you for your time, I do appreciate it.
Councilman Bench.
Good morning, how are you doing? I am really not prepared, but I did look up this one on LoopNet. This property is also sold, being sold in two parts. It's a 56-acre tract and a 15-acre tract. Why could you not buy one or the other, to put this mental facility in, and provide better services for the people that need it? Also, why would you overpay for this property? I think that this is very concerning for the citizens, that you would overpay. There's been an underlying factor for this whole jail business since day one. And we know that, that's prime property where the jail sits right now, but that's where it's been. As I said before, and stated before, this has the infrastructure. The jail, the courthouse, team, everything is downtown. Also, just a mild statement, Dale City is a good place to live. I meet the Shine program every Sunday. We sit down there, and we pull weeds, and we talk, and we converse. It's a good problem. I hated to hear that it's moving from county to Oklahoma City, but I am also happy for the fact that maybe they'll have some better tools. We, half the time, that team shows up, and they have no shovels, no hoes, no rakes. I have, the back of my car, it has a water hose, it has a hoe, it has a rake, it has fertilizer. I look like a traveling agriculture salesman. But I'm sad to see that it's moved into a different section of the city. I appreciate the Shine program, and everything it's done for our community, but also, if y'all would just drive through my area, it is working-class people. We are good people. We are the working class, we are the people that wait on your tables. We change your tires, we check you out at the grocery store. We are hard workers, and we love what we have, and we don't want it changed. Please take that into consideration, thank you.
School Board Member Gina Standridge.
Morning. I just want to say, I am opposed to the mental health facility being there, because I feel like you're back-dooring the jail into Dale City. It is your way to get that jail there, otherwise, why would you put a mental health facility so far away from where it needs to be? You all have said it needs to be close to the jail. And contrary to popular belief, Dale City people are not uneducated people. We are educated, whether it is through life experience, or higher education. We know what is going on, we know what you're trying to do. I also want to address the fact that that area is zoned an I-3, which is industrial. Right 300 foot away is Reliant Living Center. It is zoned an R-4. I would think a mental health facility is more close to Reliant Living Center than an industrial area. Why do you think you can just go ahead and build that on industrial, without getting a permit? That baffles me. We're talking about a mental health facility. It is closest to the Reliant Living Center, as far as structure. I don't see how you can put it on an I-3. And as far, I don't think you can build it from the ground up, either, for your 40 to 50 million, not the structure you're talking about. Why are you not considering an existing structure, like Hillcrest or Telstar, that you can redo, and possibly have some money left over to give back to communities? I know Mid-Dale would love to have it for some mental health facilities for our students in our community. As far as the sovereign piece, that is just crazy. That is normally reserved for unincorporated lands, or Native American lands, or kings and queens, which we don't have any here in the United States. Davidson, I still believe you should recuse yourself, for many, many reasons. Your donors are profiting off of your votes, millions and millions, off a grant, and now over in Deer Creek, same thing happening. You need to recuse yourself. You went a whole year without filing ethics reports, and when you did file them, they're a mess. They're a mess. There are guidelines you need to follow. You need to recuse yourself. As far as all of you being a cohesive unit, you're not. I can't see you overseeing a mental health facility for our most vulnerable population out there. This is something that needs to be rethought. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings. Mr. Cummings.
Thank you, everybody. I think, I think, let's go with the serious stuff first. Miles, these are texts between you and your appointed person, showing that you are doing the TIF district over here, and you're already planning it. Now, let's go to, do we have a DA's opinion on whether you can do this sovereignty? Sovereignty, can't get that word out. Do we have a DA's opinion? Are you going to get one? Are you going to vote on this, before you get a DA's opinion? When Oklahoma City voted 6 to 1 against, David Holt was the only one for? And you do need to recuse yourself. You're starting to look dirty, and I liked you, and I don't really like you anymore. You look dirty, and this deal looks dirty, and if he chooses himself, it's 1 to 1, which is a no. So I am asking you to recuse yourself, or I'm going to walk down and ask Vicky to ask you to recuse yourself, because your bookwork is dirty. You should have just filed it, it would have been easier. I liked you, and I don't like you anymore. All right, so let's talk about some of these texts, back and forth. So he's got a guy that he appointed, who's over there jostling for position for the staff. Is, is that what your appointed people do? Are they over jostling for, for position? Is that, is that how this is working? It's on paper, and you can check your own stuff, you know what I'm talking about, Mark will be talking about it in a minute, the mayor talked about it, he knew it. This is, this is dirty. So the original jail was corrupt. Is that fair? The whole building process? So we're going to start with this being corrupt, and you're grabbing way more acreage than you need? Mental health facility that serves the community? Where did that start? Was it three or four years ago, that we started mental health facilities that served the community? You don't need to do a land grab for that. Why does no one want your business? What is it that's so dirty about you all, that nobody wants your business? Is it because they believe you're corrupt? Which, in this case, the audience said you're corrupt. Is it because you won't listen to the citizens? Or is it because you don't represent the citizens? Which, which one is it? Nobody wants your business. Isn't that weird? Shouldn't you look at your Yelp reviews, like the Yelp review on it? The mayor doesn't want it, the vice mayor doesn't want it, the counselors don't want it, the citizens don't want it, Oklahoma City doesn't want it, and you're going to force this shit down somebody's throat? Seriously? That's how we're going to play? Okay, from a lawsuit standpoint, how are you looking at this thing? Because you know, they're not just going to let it go in, and then are we going to expire the $50 million through lawsuits? How, how much will the lawyers make? Are these friends of yours also, that overdonated? Are they? Because it looks like you got a lot of ties, bro. You're dirty. I hate it. See ya.
Mr. Vol.
So I want to start with this. We want to make it clear that the People's Council for Justice Reform is opposed to a mental health facility on this property in Dale City. We are opposed to a mental health facility attached to a jail. We know that this is a con job, to get that mental health facility approved, at which point you will then approve the jail, and build it next door to it. We believe that you should take that money, either build one out into the community somewhere separate, so that we don't criminalize mental health, or you should split that money up between some of the communities, let them build their own mental health facilities, or use existing buildings, and have it run by the community, because at this point, we don't trust you to build and run a treehouse, much less a mental health facility. Now, we're going to talk about these contacts between Miles Davidson and Xavier Nera, his appointee to the Oversight Commission. So this is the Board that, that is supposed to oversee how this bond money is spent, and make sure that there's no shady dealings. Well, this is full of shady dealings. And I'm just going to read a few of them. We have copies of it, that's being passed around the media right now. We'll get you all copies of it, and I want to put one on the record. So, at one point, Miles, you and your appointee to the Oversight Committee are talking about the property, and is it too close to the Crooked Oak Stadium? You go back and forth about it, and then you finally say, even if it is illegal or too close, doesn't matter, we are moving to school property anyhow. And this was, uh, back in, appears to be back in February. February, all right? So, at one point. So, at one point, you're now talking about, uh, should we do the sovereignty? And this is in March, months ago. Let's get, and this is, uh, your appointee Xavier. Let's get ready to file for sovereignty as soon as rezoning is filed. Council seems to think it helps them to go that route, so they will not worry too much about pushing to help us. So, you are gonna claim this months ago. This has been your scheme all along. At some point, then you're talking about Brian Mahn. This is, uh, again, your, your appointee. He said it is stupid to have government to sue government. I don't think he budges. Did Carrie change her mind? And then, um, Miles, you said, well, evidently he has changed his mind. They, they don't talk well of you in these Brian Mahn, by the way. Let's move forward to another one. Now, we've talked about how this was a scheme to privatize our jail, and I'm sorry if I go over, I'm signed up for three items, but this'll just take a minute, and it's important. This is, um, this is Xavier, talking to federally approved funding source tomorrow about funding the entire county jail. Wanna jump in on that call? We may be able to tell the city to go fry themselves. Miles Davidson? Uh, yes, that's your answer. This is insane, and I tell you that this is the tip of the iceberg. This is the tip of the iceberg. If we know this much from the stuff you reluctantly gave to Gina Standridge on her open records request, we know that, that there is dirt through and through. We know there is dirt through and through on this. And finally, let's see what else we have here. Okay, now, uh, here's one that's just, I don't know much about this, but it seems a little weird. This is, um, your, your appointee saying, wanna talk? And you saying, operational funds. Cody has instructions not to say a penny, but you can. And what are we talking about? A penny sales tax that you're gonna push upon the county to fund the day-to-day operations? So, let me recap that really quickly. You're gonna privatize a jail. You and your buddies who own that property out there are going to do this deal. You're then gonna build the jail next to the mental health facility. You already knew you were gonna do this, this county sovereignty a long time ago. Oh, and here, let's, let's do one more quick one, and then I'll, I'll wrap it up. There are several places in here where you're talking, or your appointee is talking to the Chamber of Commerce. At one of them, let me see if I can find it. Okay, we're talking about, uh, the problems and the bad press that you're getting because you don't have the money to build a damn jail, and you knew it to begin with, but it turns out it's not you that did this. It turns out that, Miles Davidson, you said this. "They, the chamber, are the ones that put the cart before the horse in asking for money on a project we had no idea how much it would cost." You schemed this before the vote. The Chamber of Commerce is pulling the strings. This is insane. This is collusion. You should be in jail, and there's a really good possibility you will be. So, I am telling you now, we echo what the other people are saying here. You need to recuse yourself from this, you need to quit colluding with the Chamber of Commerce, you need to quit having the person who's supposed to have oversight of this bond in collusion with you to push through the property that your buddies owned and who, and who funded your campaign. This is insanity. This is a con job, it is crooked. I know y'all remember decades ago when we indicted probably two-thirds of the county commissioners in the entire state. Well, that's about to happen again. We're telling you, if this moves forward, there will be lawsuits. There will likely be indictments, and the things that you have said in here and the things that I know that we haven't seen that you've said yet are crooked and show that you're crooked and show that you're colluding with the Chamber of Commerce and show that you're colluding with the property owners to shove through a jail that nobody wants on that property.
Ms. Baker? Mr. Johnston?
Good morning, guys. I want to start off, uh, again, I think you guys are hearing what's going on. How serious this is, uh, is, I saw some smiles and smirks from you, but this shit's not funny. I'm reading from you, a card from, uh, federal agents who handed this off to me and other people. This is from the Special Litigation Section of the United States Department of Justice, Oklahoma County Detention Center Investigation. "The DOJ is conducting an investigation related to the protection from harm, environmental health, safety, medical, and mental health care at the Oklahoma County Detention Center." That means they're looking into you, they're looking into every single city councilor that's sending, signing contracts, your staffers, and everything like that. This shit is serious business. "Testified before the grand jury," so I'm not afraid of you guys. None of us are fucking afraid of you. You're small people, okay? You're small fucking people. Now, excuse my French, but I get tired of you guys, okay? We are not gonna open up a door, and three hundred plus fucking million dollars is gonna come out of it. We don't have enough money. What is it, to build a treehouse? We don't have the money. It's over. We need to do something else now. You need to recuse yourself immediately. I'm also asking you to resign. You need to resign. If, that's it. You can look at me like you're king shit, I don't care. You don't have as much power as these motherfuckers in DC. You just don't. As you got, you guys have known this, we've been publicly out there, we've been holding town, town hall meetings where we've had the, the feds there getting people's stories. This is happening. The FBI as well, got FBI forms as well. And this is why people don't want your business. Excuse me, I have a call. This is why people don't have your business. They don't want to have your business, all right? So, from, there has been a lot of lies, a lot of fraudulent statements that have been made for years that everything was worse under the sheriff's office, that is absolutely not true. We lost an average of around three point eight four people per year, which is still about three times the national average. It's around twelve now at the county jail, okay? They have tons of money, they get roughly around thirty-three million dollars or so from the general fund, it fluctuates each fiscal year, and they get, of course, contracts from the cities to house people. It's a hotel, it's around fifty-four bucks a head, a day. That's why they let them out at midnight, where they can get some more money. It's good business. So, we, uh, the sheriff's office, and I signed up for a couple of more, so give me, give me just a little bit to wrap up. So, under the sheriff's office, from two thousand to two thousand nineteen, we lost seventy-three people. Way too many people, way, 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 way too many people. But here's the thing, that's almost two decades, right? We're up to forty-eight. Some numbers are showing fifty, and it ain't even four years yet. By two thousand twenty-seven, the math is showing that we will have eclipsed seventy-seven deaths. Seven years. Now, tell me, because one plus one is still two in this universe, how the sheriff's office is somehow, the, the cabal of evildoers is worse than the jail trust, Chamber of Commerce and everything like that, okay? So, this is another reason why they don't want your business. Deaths keep going up, uh, they keep saying it's a building. Hygiene, it takes a brush and some soap and water. That's not a, a building doesn't clean its fucking self. A building doesn't grab a baton and start hitting people over the head. It's people. It's always been people. You've got a bunch of Keystone cops running the joints. The first failed inspection, because we haven't passed one since two thousand nineteen, under the, the sheriff, and by no means do I play fool or anything with the sheriff, he's a scumbag too. February eighteenth, two thousand twenty was the first failed one. February fifth, two thousand twenty-one, second, Ju, June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, three in one year. April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, October twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, and going by the rate, we're gonna have our eighth failed inspection. This is why you're facing so many people fighting you. This is why we, the people, got tired of your shit and contacted the federal government and worked with the state and are gonna continue to keep working with any fit law enforcement that's gonna work into you. I'm calling for criminal investigations into everybody that's been involved. We're not gonna stop, and this is why. You're gonna get sued out the ass by Dell City. You've got Midwest City that's supporting Dell City, they've already signed a document saying they, they're gonna support them. You've got everybody against you. It's time, it's time to make good decisions. He needs to be removed immediately. He needs to recuse himself and do, find another work. I'm gonna submit this for a matter of record, this card, and you can contact the number of the...
Ms. Baker, come back. Any others to speak? Mr. Engineer, he's gonna speak about the amended contract.
Yes, as directed from the last executive session, we've reworked the contract. The contract before you today allows you to purchase the property at nineteen oh one East Grant, thus stepping into the shoes of, and be the landowner now. And then you can pursue any appeal against the dilled decision of the city or any other legal matters that you want to take up across the alley here. As landowner, you'll have the standing. That's what the contract basically says.
Okay? You have any comments?
No.
All right, well, in an effort to try to save the ARPA money and to go forward with plans that are already designed, I'm gonna go ahead and move that we purchase this and become the official landowner. Whether we go forward with any other utilization of the land will yet be determined in a future meeting. It can include multiple purposes, I might add, and so for those reasons, we're not going to use the bond money to pay for this. So, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, this is for you to sign the buyer's settlement statement with the title company so we can move forward with the closing. The, um, rest of the dollars are there, four million nine hundred ninety-nine thousand two hundred ninety dollars, because we had previously posted some earnest money.
Okay? Any questions? Comments?
No questions. I'll just say, District One, we have been a no on this pretty consistently. Commissioner Blumer would like to still consider other sites, and, um, we're gonna be a no on this, just like we were on item number four.
Any comment? I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there opposed? Then, item six?
You're gonna go down with me? You need to be careful.
First floor annex.
Yes, this is a contract with Cooley Construction. They were the low bidder on your front entrance project. A little bit over the original budget, but the money's been put in place from, from other monies that were saved on other projects, uh, one million six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. We would recommend approval to move forward with this project.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any commissioner comments, District One?
No.
Three?
No.
And are we in agreement that we can cancel the executive session items? DA says yes. You wanna move to strike him or just take no action?
Motion to strike.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other citizens to speak? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.